We will call the April 6th meeting of County Council to order at 4:10 PM in the afternoon. May everybody please rise with us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That horrible kind of feedback.
Okay, thank you for that. And next on our agenda is our optional prayer or invocation. And Councilwoman Shauerman, if you could please lead us in that this evening.
This is an inspirational quote, "Life is a mountain. Your goal is to find your path, not to reach the top." Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote of council, please?
Mrs. Clear?
Yeah.
Mr. Horton? Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
Here we are, here.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Here.
Mr. Shank?
Here.
Chairman Anderson?
Here.
Next on our agenda is the hearing of the public. We had no members of the public that signed up to receive the five minutes. At this time, members of the public can be recognized and will receive three minutes to speak. Are there any members of the public that wish to be heard? Any members of the public that wish to be heard? And finally, any members of the public that wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move forward with our agenda. Next on our agenda tonight is the minutes from the previous meeting. Do I have a motion from council to accept the minutes?
I'm moved to accept the minutes from March 16th regular meeting.
Motion moved from Councilman Horton, seconded by Councilman Shank. Are there any comments or questions or changes from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the approval of the minutes, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Next, we have reports from county officials or their designees. First on our agenda is any reports from the County Executive. Mr. Sparber, does the County Executive wish to make any reports this evening?
None tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We next have a report from the Finance Committee. Finance Chairwoman Clear, if you would give us your report, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, April 1st, 2021, and I am going to be submitting in new business items A through I and item K. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Now we have a report from the Chairwoman of Personnel. Chairwoman Rennie, if you could give us your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee met on Thursday, April 1st, 2021, and I am submitting item J under New Business to tonight's agenda. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairwoman Rennie. Next up, we will have a short report from the Election Board. And Chairwoman Rennie, if you could give us that report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Elections met today, this afternoon, and gave approval to polling changes for Mill Creek 2, Corey 2, and Erie 611. The Board also certified the 2021 primary ballot as it is currently approved by the Board prior to this. However, it is pending any appeals currently before Commonwealth Court. And that is the only thing that could change things. We do anticipate another meeting of the Board within the next week or week and a half. And so at the next council meeting, I may have further updates for you accordingly. So thank you. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Chairwoman Rennie, and we look forward to your further report from the Election Board. And thank you and the rest of the Election Board for all the work that you're doing as we prepare for the primary election. I will just give a brief report as Chairman of Council, just in regards, as I had mentioned in the caucus meeting, that we plan to bring forward and had planned to bring forward this evening, a resolution in support of the increased staffing requirements from both a human capital standpoint and monetary standpoint, and increased requirements for protection of safe and safety for nursing home caregivers, primarily brought to our attention through the SEIU Union. We did not feel this evening that we were completely ready to bring that resolution forward. And so we make sure that we get this done correctly. We are going to wait until next council meeting to bring that forward, but certainly do plan on continuing to move that forward and bringing it to council and to the public. So thank you for that. Any other members of council wish to give a report? Seeing none, next on our agenda are citations. Council members through family, friends, and members of the community choose to recognize people with a remembrance and recognition of council and to have that citation read into the record. We do have five citations this evening to bring forward. I have two citations, one for Alan Bach, who is the brother of Mill Creek Supervisor and our good friend and public servant Jim Bach. We wish his family, you know, all of our best regards and sympathies in the passing of his brother. And Mr. Smith, if you could give us a summary of that citation, please, for Alan Bach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Alan Bach, 1950 to 1921. Where is Alan, Al Bach, passed from this world on February the 9th, 2021, at the age of 70 years? Al was born June 29, 1950, to the late Elton Earl and Nettie Mae Eggersbach. And whereas Al grew up in Mill Creek Township, graduating from McDowell High School, class of 68, Al went on proudly to serve in the US Navy from 1970 through 74, stationed in Charleston, South Carolina, and also served in the Vietnam Conflict. Al studied at Triangle Tech, became owner of the National Appliance Service of Erie, moved to Richmond, Virginia in 1988, also worked at Sears as an appliance repair technician, retiring in 2007. Whereas Al was preceded in death by his parents and both his father and mother-in-law, Philip and Rita Palmer. He survived by his loving wife Rebecca Helen Bach of Temple, Texas. Al was also survived by Sister Sandra, Sheila, and Brother James, married to Rachel, all of Erie, Pennsylvania. Nephews Jason Butts, married to Amy Westball. Scott Butts, married to Lauren Driscoll. And Joan and Ethan Bach of Erie, Pennsylvania, nieces Shannon Zilman and Chloe Bach of Erie and other family and friends. Al will always remember, with great respect and friendship, by District 4 County Councilman Carl J. Anderson III.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next on our agenda for citations is a citation for Mrs. Judy Moreno. Judy is the mother of Captain Chris Campanelli of the Sheriff's Department, and our sympathies to Chris and his family. I will make further comments after the reading of the citation. But Mr. Smith, if you could read the citation in its entirety, please.
Mrs. Judy A. Nunes Moreno, 1944 to 2021. Whereas Judy Moreno departed this world on March 16th, 2021, at the age of 77 years. Judy was born on January 8th, 1944, to the late Manuel and June Manross Nunes, Erie, Pennsylvania. Whereas Judy was a proud graduate of Academy High School until her retirement from Hemet Medical Center. Judy was a devoted advocate for patient care. And whereas as a lifelong resident of Erie, Judy found joy in traveling to warmer, sunnier destinations, much like the sun that she sought in those travels, her smile shone just as bright and her warmth carried to all who surrounded her. Whereas Judy's greatest joy was her family. She was a devoted mother, grandmother, sister, aunt, and friend. She survived by her son Chris Campanelli, married to Molly. Daughter Destiny Carter, married to Timothy. Sister Cheryl Bynum, married to James. Kimberly Syparsky, married to James. Karen Faron, married to Patrick. Brother Timothy Nunes and four grandchildren, Alexandria, Anthony, April, and Dominic. She is also survived by many nieces and nephews and her beloved dog, Emma Lou. And whereas Judy, being daughter of Manuel Paul Nunes Jr., born in Erie and June Manross, born in Erie, growing up in Erie's Little Italy, attending St. Paul's Church and celebrating the traditions of her Portuguese, Canadian, English heritage. And whereas Judy was the paternal granddaughter of Manuel Paul Nunes Sr., born in Lisbon, Portugal, and Maria Viveros Maderos, born in St. Michael Azor's Island, Portugal, first immigrating to the whaling capital of the world, New Bedford, Mass., and following the tradition of fishing. As immigrants longing for a better life, they migrated to Erie, Pennsylvania for the rich soil to become owners of a farm. Junie was the maternal granddaughter of Bert D. Manross of Reno, Vanangle County, Pennsylvania, and Fay Dundas of Viavel, Ontario, Canada. Judy lived her life as a proud second-generation American. And now therefore, we the undersigned members of Erie County Council, join Captain Chris Campanelli of Erie County Sheriff's Department in celebrating the life of his mother, Mrs. Judy A. Nunes Moreno, a woman whose smile lit up the room and whose heart touched all. May she rest in peace and witness whereof we have set our hands in the seal of Erie County the sixth day of April 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And to you, Captain Campanelli, we are sorry for your loss. Sheriff John Loomis had made council aware of the passing of your mother. And with the dedication that you and your wife Molly give to county government in the long years that you have given service to our community, we wanted to present this citation to you on behalf of County Council and county government for your service and for the remembrance of your mother. I will say I did not know your mother, but I did know your grandfather, many members of the Nunes family, the Amaroso family, Ribario family, Gustamsky family, and et cetera, et cetera. Long members of Little Italy and then the southeast portion of the city of Erie. I know it's a family of hard-working, dedicated people, not only to their community, but to their family. And for that, we thank them for their migration to our community, which has helped made our community a richer, better place for all of us to live. And we send our best thoughts to you and your family with our sympathies. Are there any other members of council that wish to make any comments? Captain Campanelli, would you like to make any comments? You're certainly welcome to do so.
I would. I would like to thank you all very much. Still a little soft.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, and thank you for being here with us tonight. Next, Councilwoman Shauerman has a citation for Mr. David Shivers. Mr. Shivers was a dedicated and committed member to this community, a business owner in the construction industry, and held very union-strong ties with his workers. Unfortunately, he had a tragic accident while he was trying to save his own dogs in Fairview Township. And Councilwoman Shauerman presents this this evening and asks that, Mr. Smith, you would read it in its entirety, please.
Mr. David G. Shivers, 1950 to 1921. Whereas David Dave Shivers left this world behind on February 21, 2021, at the age of 70 years. Dave was born April 25, 1950, to Boyd D. and Margaret Antolik Shivers in Erie, Pennsylvania. Whereas Dave was a proud Fairview High graduate of 1968 and raised his family to continue the Tiger legacy, supported local athletics, and grew his business in his hometown. As a young entrepreneur, Dave began Shivers Construction fresh out of high school with a bulldozer and a dream. And whereas Shivers Construction Company has been serving customers throughout Pennsylvania, Ohio, and New York for over 50 years in water and wastewater treatment and conveyance. Dave was an out-of-the-box thinker and always found a way to, quote, "make it work." Shivers Construction has contributed to Erie area projects, including sand mounting at Prest Isle, sheet piling retainer walls at Holland and Liberty Streets, bridge work for Pennelec, and the Dobbin's Landing Restoration Project in 2012, among many. Whereas Dave valued nothing more in life than family, a hard-work ethic, and the generosity of self. It is important to Dave to instill those attributes in his children and them work alongside him on the farm as early as age eight, baling hay, raising livestock, and learning family values. And whereas Dave's passion for life was exuded in all he did, his laughter connected those around, and he was always ready for a joke. Dave cherished time spent with friends, loved his dogs, and had a knack for gag gifts, enjoyed reading and researching projects when he wasn't working. He loved recreational bulldozing. And whereas Dave will be sorely missed by his adoring children, Emily Yocum, husband Chris, John Shivers' wife Melissa, Timothy Shivers, two sisters, Darlene Shivers of Huntington, Pennsylvania, Nancy Kohler Cunningham, and her husband Wayne of Mill Creek, his brother Boyd Shivers and his wife Lynn of Candia, New Hampshire, his former wife Mary Burke Shivers of Fairview, nine grandchildren, Seth, Elliot, Oliver, Annalee, Isaac, Ella, Leila, Burke, and Colin, and several nieces and nephews. In addition to his parents, Dave was preceded in death by his son Colin Shivers. Now therefore, we the undersigned members of Erie County Council, joined with Councilwoman Ellen Shauerman in celebrating the life and contributions of David D. Shivers to his community. His lifelong lifetime of determination and persistence serves as a valuable example to all. May he rest in peace. A witness whereof, we have set our hands in the seal of Erie County the sixth day of April 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Councilwoman Shauerman?
I would just like to say that we were very blessed to have Mr. Shivers as part of our community, and our condolences go out to his family. Thank you.
Thank you. And we had waited for tonight's meeting to read the citation because there were members of the Shivers family that were going to try and attend. So are there any members of the Shivers family who are on the Zoom meeting that would like to make any comments? If not, Councilman Horton, if you would, please.
Sure. I was hoping the Shivers family was on there because I did know Dave Shivers. I didn't know him well, but I knew that family was important to him because I had a family member who worked for him. And not unlike a lot of large families, you know, my family member had some substance abuse problems while he was working for Mr. Shivers. And he came and brought his problem to Mr. Shivers, who told him to go get some help and see him when he came back. And my family member went and got help, and he came back. And he struggled for another year or two. But I want you to know that he did overcome that demon. And he did. He went back to school and got his degree and became a very productive member of the community that he lives in, in California. And so not only did it effectively probably save his life, but it sure improved the quality of it. It extended to his offspring as well, too, because they had the opportunity to have a father who wasn't on drugs, and it gave us an opportunity to have a family member restored back to some semblance of sanity. And so when I seen that Mr. Shivers had passed, I called my brother, and he shared that with me because I didn't know that prior to that. And as a 30-year member of organized labor and construction industry, very, 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 very well aware of all of the work that the Shivers Construction has done, not just in the city of Erie, but throughout Erie County and also in the state of Ohio. And not only was he a blessing to Fairview, but he was a blessing to this entire region. And my heart and my prayers go out to his family. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Horton. Councilman Shank, would you like to make some comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I didn't know the Shivers family personally, but I know they're, they have touched everybody in our community. And their projects, we have a project down the road going on. I'm going to make this really, really simple. The man sounded like he liked a good joke. I'd like to have somebody define recreational bulldozing. I just think those are two words that just have never, ever been put together in my entire life. So anytime someone wants to explain to you what recreational bulldozing is, I would love to hear that answer, and I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other members of council wish to make comments? Okay, next citation are two citations from Councilman Shank. First is Mr. Richard Travers, and second is Jason Bowlinger. Mr. Shank will make comments after each of them, and Mr. Smith, if you could read each of them in summary, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Richard C. Travers, 1946 to 2021. Whereas Richard Dick Travers climbed the Stairway to Heaven on March 22nd, 2021, at the age of 74 years. He was born September 5, 1946, to the late Joseph and Shirley Webster Travers. Dick was an Erieite through and through, a graduate of Strong Vincent High School, worked locally at Howard Johnson's, later retiring as a property manager at the YMCA. He worked alongside his father at Travers and Son Heating and Cooling, a business which continued throughout his lifetime. He was known for his passion for music, playing drums in multiple bands, including The Cordials, The Midnight Express, The Greyhounds, and Single Barrel. His music led into the love of his life, Suzanne, who was a singer for the Brandells. Whereas Dick was the past president of Tamarack Turkey Talkers of the National Wild Turkey Federation, dedicated to helping to restore and manage North American populations of more than 7 million wild turkeys. Dick's song will carry on in the heart of his loving wife of 56 years, Suzanne Rixton Travers and his children, Joseph Joey Travers and Lauren Travers, two grandchildren, Abigail Travers and Chelsea Duke, and expectant great-grandson in September, Oliver Richard Pratt, two sisters, Joyce Russell and Sherry Hodge, a brother, Gary Travers, and numerous nieces and nephews. Now therefore, we the undersigned members of Erie County Council, joined with Councilman Brian Shank in a grateful community and celebrating the life of Richard Dick Travers as he rides the highway into the sky. May he rest in peace. We have set our hands in the seal of Erie County the sixth day of April 2021.
Thank you. Councilman Shank?
Thank you, sir. Lauren is with us today on the Zoom. I love the author who made the comment of "Stairway to Heaven" because music was his soul. And the other part of his soul was his family, and the other part was motorcycles. And that's exactly how I met him. Dick Travers loved motorcycles. He loved helping people that unfortunately had fallen while riding a motorcycle. He was very much involved with the fallen riders. If somebody had lost a loved one on a motorcycle, their charity stepped in and donated money with not many questions asked. And a lot of people don't realize that Dick was the right-hand man to Ralph Pontello, the creator of Roar on the Shore. So when you saw Roar on the Shore roaring into Erie, trust me, Dick Travers was there on a motorcycle with a pass with full access to go everywhere and do anything for Roar on the Shore. Ralph Pontello, the creator of Roar on the Shore, left us a few years ago, and there's a commemorative patch that we had made up for Ralph Pontello. And it was a pleasure. I was asked to make the patch for Mr. Travers. I basically copied Ralph's so the two of them can be put on a vest together, and they're identical because the Roar on the Shore was their heart and soul next to their family. So I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you. And would Lauren or any other members of the family wish to make any comments? You're welcome to, if you would like.
Hi, I would just like to thank you so much for the tribute to my dad. He would just be so honored that you guys, you know, mentioned him in this way. He was just a great father. He's going to be missed so much. But I thank you from the whole family. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Lauren, and our thoughts and prayers are with your entire family. Next, Jason Bowlinger. Mr. Smith, if you could read that in summary, please, and then Mr. Shank will have comments.
Mr. Jason W. Ballinger, 1974 to 2021. Whereas Jason Ballinger left this world behind on March 15, 2021, at the age of 46 years. Born July 5, 1974, to Jeff and Elaine Ballinger, Erie, Pennsylvania. Jason was a graduate of Seneca High School, class of 1993. He went on to become a professional truck driver, traveling throughout the country. Jason later worked with Team Hardiger and went on to be a dispatcher for Logistics Plus, Inc. Whereas Jason was an active member of the East Erie Moose Club, son of the Moose Club, sons of the American Legion Squadron 105, an American Legion rider of Chapter 105. Jason recently became a Brother in Arms as a Brookside Volunteer Fireman, one of his proudest accomplishments. Jason's greatest joys in life were his four children, Julia, Andrew, Isabella, and Olivia.
He loved spending time with them, enjoyed working outdoors, fishing, playing golf, had an interest in trains, and will be forever remembered as four-year-old who hitched a ride from GE to the Union Station. Jason's passions for life, compassionate spirit, kind soul will be missed by his loving wife, Christine Roditis Bollinger and their children, his brother Jeremy Bollinger, parents Jeff and Elaine Bollinger, and all of those who he touched throughout his life. Jason was preceded in death by his grandparents, Mary and Franklin Carnes, and Margaret and Jessie Bollinger. Now therefore, we the undersigned members of County Council, join with the family of Jason W. Bollinger in celebrating his life and inviting all to remember his spirit with each passing train whistle. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And Councilman Shank, if you'd like to make comments, please.
Thank you, sir. As you can tell, Jason left us way too soon. He was a young man. He has a family. The family that he had in the Volunteer Fire Department is a very, very loyal and dedicated family. When he, when he passed away, it was a shock to all of us. He was that guy that he would love having around. We were on a call together. You know, he was all business. And when he actually, we had his funeral here in Harbor Creek, we were tasked to support the Volunteer Fire Departments. So he and his company could come together and say goodbye together as a team. So the other Volunteer Fire Departments stepped forward. We take their calls. We make sure that every member is available to go to their service. I was the poor guy that had to stand out on Route 20 in the cold in direct traffic in and out. But that is one of the small prices we pay for being in a Brotherhood of Fire Department and firemen, fire police, rescue, EMS, EMTs. And for that, we will miss our Brother in Arms at the Brookside Volunteer Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Shank, do we know, are any members of his family on the call today?
I sent, yeah, I didn't get any confirmation back on it, so I don't think they're here.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other members of council that wish to make comments? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Smith, if you will include all of these citations in the record of council and appropriately send them to members of their family, we would appreciate that very much. And thank you for that today. We have, bless you, Councilman Horton. We have no old business on our agenda today, but we do have several items under new business, and so we will move to new business.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, that was your cue.
I was muted. Thank you for calling.
Councilwoman Clear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to have ordinances number 22, numbers 22, 23, 24, and 25, which are items A, B, C, and D on the agenda, to have those moved to a second. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to amend the agenda to those four items moving to a second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Clear and seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman to amend tonight's agenda. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Mr. Smith, could we have a roll call vote to amend the agenda, please?
Mr. Horton? Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Mr. Smith, could we have a second reading of ordinance number 22 in title only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 22, 2021, first 2021 Health Choices Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $700,000, and new line item for community-based care management program.
Second.
The motion was moved by Councilwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, I'll just make a quick comment. And first of all, you know, state that this is an item that additional funds are being brought to Erie County to help mitigate the many issues that we face with not only social economic issues, this item in particular with the homeless population, but through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and, as I said, the beginning of many funds that we're going to receive in regards to how we move our community forward, particularly with the Heroes Funds and other grants that are going to be coming to Erie County. These are critical funds to help these populations. We are tonight entrusting them in, through Erie County Care Management. And, you know, we look to have positive outcomes from these funds that are being invested. And with that said, Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, on ordinance 22, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. And can we now have a second reading of ordinance number 23 in title only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 23, 2021, fourth 2021 Public Health Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $370,224 in additional grant funds for flu immunizations and COVID-19 vaccinations.
We have a motion from Councilman Horton, seconded by Councilman Rastetter. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, I will just again make a quick comment again in regards to the necessity and the quality of care that we are hoping comes from these dollars that are being brought in from the state in regards to this additional appropriation for the COVID-19 vaccine and other flu immunizations. We will be entrusting these funds to LECOM for their services. And it is absolutely critical that these services are provided throughout all of Erie County and to those who most need it. So we want to thank LECOM for their services and the administration, certainly the Health Department for the work that they've done. With that said, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Ordinance 23, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a second reading of ordinance number 24 in title only. Mr. Smith, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 24, 2021, third 2021 Library Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $4,000 PA Humanities Council Grant for Blasco Library Teen Reading Lounge.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilman Horton, seconded by Councilwoman Clear. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Ordinance 24, Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. May we have a second reading of ordinance number 25 in title only. Mr. Smith, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 25, 2021, fourth 2021 Library Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $2,300 for donation from Erie Regional Library Foundation.
Second.
Councilwoman Rennie, I'll recognize you as the first motion because that was Mr. Horton sneezing, not making a motion on that one.
I apologize. I thought that another council member had chimed in at the same time.
That was a sneeze. So I'll recognize you for the motion.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Yes. I'll second it.
Okay. A motion made by Councilwoman Rennie, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please? And bless you, Councilman Horton. We didn't say that, so.
Ordinance number 25, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. And just for the general public, as we move through our agenda, items where funds are coming into county government, we tend to move those to a second reading, what you saw under these items tonight, under funds where we look to expend money from county government. Council members like to have the opportunity to take a look, make sure that they understand the full gravity of what it is that we're expending money on and taking their fiscal responsibility seriously, whether seeking advice from our solicitor or our financial advisor and just ensuring the public that we are doing our due diligence. We tend to leave those items as a first reading, which we will do for the next couple of items. And with that said, Mr. Smith, can we have a first reading of ordinance number 26 in title only?
First reading ordinance number 26, 2021, fifth 2021 Library Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $105,500 and News Bank Purchase Agreement for Historic Newspaper Digitization Project.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And may we have a first reading of ordinance number 27 in title only. And this will be a companion ordinance to ordinance number 26.
First reading of ordinance number 27, 2021, ninth 2021 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $105,500 for Library Historic Newspaper Digitization Project.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Resolution Number 11. Mr. Smith, could we have that in title only, please?
Resolution number 11, 2021, a resolution to enter into a letter of intent with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, to conduct a countywide study of fire and emergency medical services.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motioned by Councilman Rastetter and seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Sorry, Councilwoman Clear, you were muted out.
Sorry. I think I'm on the wrong one. Okay.
And any questions or comments from members of council? Okay, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Resolution Number 11, 2021, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. May we have a reading of Resolution Number 12 in title only, please, Mr. Smith?
Resolution number 12, 2021, exonerating 2019 taxes, fees, and interest on 330 East 25th Street, Erie, Pennsylvania,
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Shauerman, seconded by Councilwoman Clear. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, may we have a roll call vote, Mr. Smith, please?
Resolution number 12, 2021, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. May we have a reading of Resolution Number 13 in title only, please?
Resolution number 13, 2021, in support of seeking bids for the demolition of the former Pleasant Ridge Manor East Building on East Door Road.
We have the motion moved by Councilwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? And many of you can see on the screen now, it's a short, simple resolution. But as mentioned earlier, working with the administration, particularly the Purchasing Department, to show councils the beginning of their support for the demolition of Pleasant Ridge Manor. Mr. Shank, you have some comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I know this has been a political football for many, many years, before most of us were even on council. I remember when that building was actually up and running and it's just kind of sad that it did deteriorate kind of quickly. But I'm really proud that all of us came together. The Shenanigans stay outside. We came together. We focused on this. And I think we need to push this forward and get it done so we can put this football away forever. I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of council?
Sure, I'd like to make a comment on that.
Councilman Rastetter?
I just want everybody to know that we did do our due diligence on this. You know, none of us really wanted to see it torn down. We'd like to reuse it, but it's just not practical and it's costing the taxpayers money. So it's, like Brian said, it's good to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of council? Seeing none, I'm going to make a few comments then as well. And to Councilman Shank's point, this has been an issue that has And to Councilman Shank's point, this has been an issue that has preceded almost all of us on council, except perhaps for Councilman Horton. And in two thousand and nineteen, I was asked to be the chair by County Council Chairman Fiore Leone of a committee made up of myself, Councilman Horton, and Carol Lowell at the time, to take a look at a study. We spent many, many hours working together, having experts come in. And at the end of our study, the recommendation was for council to undertake a formal strategic plan, not only about Pleasant Ridge Manor, but understanding all of the property that county government owns. And because of the pandemic, that report was delayed. But during then Chairman Horton's council last year, that report was brought forward and accepted by council with the recommendation to, that the building was too far gone to save or rehabilitate and that its useful life has passed and that it should be torn down. I think all council members then have become of the mind that it is time to make a move. And this resolution tonight begins to take that first step, to make the move to finally take action on Pleasant Ridge Manor East. I applaud my colleagues in county council for stepping forward and taking action on Pleasant Ridge Manor. I will say, speaking for myself, as a member of county government, I will never be of the mind to sell the property, the fourteen acres that county government owns. I've said many times in the past, I believe that's where the real value lies for county government, for our future. But that raising Pleasant Ridge Manor and getting that facility out of the way to allow for future development will only be a benefit, not only to this council and administration, but to future councils and administration, and not only county government, but all of the taxpayers of Erie County. So with that said, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on the resolution, please?
On Resolution Thirteen, twenty twenty-one, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Christ's sake, yes. Andre.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, and congratulations, council, for the positive step that we've taken tonight to move forward. Next on our agenda is the possible appointment of Brent Wyler to the Northwest Commission. This is a private sector appointee to fill the unexpired term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, for the county executive, and this was brought forth by the Personnel Committee. Mr. Smith, I kind of stole your thunder on that one, but I will open that up for a motion to appoint Brent Wyler.
So moved.
The motion was made by Councilman Horton, seconded by Councilwoman Clear. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
The appointment of Mr. Wyler, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next on our agenda, and our last item tonight, is a possible sale of the parcel from the repository. I will accept the motion. Moved by Mr. Horton, seconded by Councilwoman Clear. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the sale of the parcel located on Elk Street in Corey, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Our next finance and personnel meeting will occur on April fifteenth at four PM via Zoom conference, and our next regular meeting of council will occur on April twentieth at four PM with caucus beginning at three thirty PM. I would just pose this to the members of council. Is it time for us to begin to talk about meeting again in person? Or is that something that council would like to continue to wait to do? And it's not something that we have to fully answer tonight, but with the way things are moving forward with vaccinations and the governor lightening up on the restrictions, I just pose that to the members of council. Councilman Shank?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I know we're kind of moving in the right direction, but we still fall under some guideline issues of social distancing. Our chairs are literally only, you know, that far apart. Nothing against my fellow councilmen and women. I just don't want to see us, you know, stepping on any toes when we're supposed to be, you know, setting the stage and, you know, lead by example. You know, I like meeting in person. I do. It's fun to be with you guys. But I think we're still in that position where we should just kind of wait. I keep hearing a lot of chatter of the fourth wave and the numbers kind of moving around. So I'm at the position of, well, let's just sit back and wait and see what happens. This isn't a, we have to do thing. I yield back.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Showerman?
I'm going to agree with Councilman Shank on this one. I think we're a little premature in making that decision, and I would prefer to wait a little bit longer.
Okay, we will certainly wait through next meeting, and, but at some point, I would think, before our summer sessions, we would consider meeting once again in person. So with that said, is there any other business to be brought before the council this evening? If none, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you. Council's adjourned.
Night, everybody.
Night, everyone.